Okay, well. Okay, all right, you're on.
Kuz? Zingy? Matani? Flora is absent. He was going to call in. And Gas couldn't make it today. Finnegan? And I don't see Councilmember Kissler at this point. And we'll go from there, but that's... We do have a quorum, though, Your Honor.
Acknowledge the traditional first people of this land in Ketchikan, the Tongass Klinkit people. So now it's time for introductions. We have introductions from the Cruise Line International groups.
My name is Renee Lemoje Reeves, and I am Vice President of Government and Community Relations for CLIA here in Alaska.
Hello, Robert Morgan Stern with Carnival Corporation, Senior Vice President of Alaska Operations, looking after the Carnival ships here in Ketchikan.
Preston Conahan, Royal Caribbean Group, Regional Vice President for Destinations, so Royal Caribbean and Celebrity and Silver Sea.
Time for introduction of City Council. We'll start in this sound with Judy. And I'm Bob Severson, the Mayor. And also we'll have an introduction of city staff.
Ketchikan City Manager.
Kim Stanker, City Clerk. And Lauren Bosa, the Tourism Manager, and I'm also waiting in for the Disney folks. In about 25 minutes, they're christening their new vessel, so that is why they are not here today, but they send their regards.
And Mr. Mayor, we also have city staff, Lacy Simpson, who is our Assistant City Manager, Craig Bissin is our Port Operations Coordinator and Acting Port Director, and Seth Brackey is our Public Works Director.
Thank you. That moves us on to persons to be heard. The only one we have signed up at this time. Mary, would you please? Do we have representatives online? Yes.
Yes, hi, Laney Downs with Cruise Lines International Association in Alaska.
Hi, good morning. I'm Kirby Day with Carnival Corporation, based in Juneau and looking after the Carnival Corp. Rans here in Juneau, Government Affairs and Port Operations. Thanks for having us today.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add that Sandy Weir with Norwegian Cruise Line is not able to join us today. She is in Santorini and quite a bit of a time difference tonight, so apologies, she cannot join us.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Having Russell Benford join from Royal Caribbean in a couple minutes.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you. Move on to persons to be heard. Mary, would you like to step up and introduce yourself?
Yeah, he did this. I watched him. Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Mary Stevenson. Before you, I have given you a handout, and if anyone in the audience would like one, I'd be happy to send you a copy. I think it's important that you've got some statistics in front of you as you discuss what happens to Juneau happens to Ketchikan. In the beginning, the Epic Center is, of course, Southeast Alaska, and please, Mayor Bob, I'm only covering the front sheet. I'm not doing the whole thing, so give me that four minutes. Thank you, thank you. Just going to by 2027, going to have two private docks with four berths, and of course, terminals one through four for the public. With those two new private docks, they're bringing in 15 ships, stopping 297 times. All of that is going to free up space downtown at the Juneau's terminals one through four. So we're looking at an increase of ships in the future. It's obvious. Below, I'm numbering one through 10 of the types of ships, companies coming into port, each of them anywhere from two to four to 10. With the Gold Belt negotiations with NCL Douglas Island, that is going to be a huge increase of ships for the Southeast Alaska. Just an overview, Skagway has four ships, four terminals. They arrive anywhere from six and stay until 11:00 p.m. There's no hot birthing, very limited tendering, and their guests are exhausted after three, four, or five o'clock in the afternoon. They return to the ship. And who are coming downtown to enjoy maybe a meal or certainly hang out at the saloons are the crew members. Sitka is negotiating that their schedule is May through September. They would like to have a weekend quiet day, and they are wanting lower berth capacity at 1,000. However, that might bump up to 7,000. That's all in the negotiation. We would like to remind you Royal Caribbean is bringing in the Star of the Seas. It's being launched in '25. It'll be sailing in '26. It'll be our largest ship. 5,610 lower berth with 7,600 full capacity and a crew of 1,100 people. It'll be our biggest tonnage at 2,000, excuse me, 250,800 tons, and it'll be our longest ship at 1,198. It's very obvious that the other seaports, Metlekatla, Kakuan, are developing, as well as Petersburg and Wrangell are adding new docks. Whittier and Seward are preparing for the train straight in for interior itineraries seven to 10 days. So we are creating a one-way traffic up to those two cities, pick up, drop off, pick up more, and returning them. So they are having a cul-de-sac schedule. That brings me down to Ketchikan, Ward Cove, and Saxman. Let's not forget Saxman, it's in the works. We'd be dumb if we're ignoring it. It should be here. That equals two private docks, a total of four more berths, competing with our local four public berths. There's talk in Juneau of 16,000 or 12,000 of limits, depending on day. That's on lower berth or double occupancy, and you can always add another 20% upwards to really get the full capacity. These ships know well in advance that a ship is sold out, and they are at full capacity. I have read enough material in the travel industry to learn that you all knew back in May your ships were arriving at full capacity. But we're only being told of double occupancy, and that's not fair, because our cities have to prepare for the congestion, for the cost of infrastructure. We must be alerted of full capacity right off the bat. When you departed from Seattle, you knew the manifest, read full capacity. Our seaport should be alerted publicly to the community to prepare for 24%, 20% more. In summary, your labor force and housing, we know that they're bringing in their own. We know that they are building housing in Huna, excuse me, and also Ward Cove for housing. That's a competition to us. They're down, they're eliminating some of our housing, and they're soaking up their labor from bringing in from their own. So these are topics that I'm being reinforced on the second and third pages, and you can see how I took 2025 and projected into Juneau's terminals five, table 10, nine, and 10, and also a summary for '25 of what we should be planning for in the statistics for count, also including Ward Cove. So statistics are important when you are trying to create a memorandum of understanding of what we, the people, are saying. We are overcrowded. There are too many ships, and yet Juneau is scheduling them, so Ketchikan, we must be prepared for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else wish to speak to the council today? Hearing seen none. We'll close public comment. On persons to be heard, move to item five, which is the worst discussion topic, so at this time, we'll move into work session. Our first item is A, 2024 season recap. And presenter, please.
Yeah, I can open, but I think you probably want to hear directly from the cruise lines. But from CLIA's perspective, I just want to say thank you for the relationship that we're building daily here in Ketchikan, having Lori on board, having someone sort of dedicated to talking with us and moving these things forward, our passenger fee agreement discussions. They're very important, and it's been a really great opportunity, following our first meeting earlier this year, to do this, and we look forward to continuing this dialogue. I think it's really important, and I think we all feel that it's been beneficial. I know we agreed to do one of these virtually every year and then one in person. This should have been our entirely virtual one, but I think, you know, having us at the table, I hope, demonstrates the seriousness and our willingness to work and be a part of this conversation with the community. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor. It's good to have you back. And I'll turn it over to our cruise line partners, who probably have a little more detail for you, but thank you for a great season.
Thank you.
No problem. Mr. Mayor, council members, just a lot of appreciation for another great cruise season. It doesn't happen in isolation. I see some tour operators here also and a lot of great partners. So 2024, our brands had nine ships in the market between Royal Caribbean, Celebrity, and Silver Sea, with about half of them calling in Ketchikan. We saw the highest ratings we've ever had for the Alaska market in terms of guest satisfaction. That's in no short reason for the hospitality that we receive here in Ketchikan from the businesses, from the city. We also know that there are many ongoing challenges, and I say that collectively, and I think that's why we're, one of the reasons why we're here today, is, you know, we all have different challenges. It's important, you know, for myself to hear from you all and to understand what those are as we look to understand the future in terms of how, you know, our business continues visiting your town and working with the residents and the tour operators and everything. So thank you. Great to be here again.
Thank you. It's great to be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Echo what Renee shared earlier. We all met, I think it was last March. Is that right there? And met with all of you, and we really agreed to do this on a regular basis. And really glad to be here, glad to be here in the snow and the beautiful scenery of Ketchikan. And I would just sum the season up by saying it was very good. We're very happy. Our brands are extremely happy with how Alaska is going as a trade overall. Alaska has been an enduring location, particularly coming out of COVID. There's a lot of guest demand for Alaska, and the satisfaction ratings are very, very high. People love the experience here. As Preston shared, you know, we understand also that there are challenges, whether they be infrastructure, guest management, tour capacity, those kinds of things, and I think anytime we get together in person and work through those and work towards shared priorities and shared value, it sets us all up for a better, you know, a better relationship going forward. So very happy to be here and look forward to today's dialogue.
Thank you, Robert. Anybody else? Anybody online? All right. Hearing and seeing none. We'll go on to the item B, update topics from the March 27 work session. Yes? Yeah. Oh, city staff. Okay, correct. I see it at the end. Thank you. Please.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, all of our guests here. Thank you for being here. If you kind of look at this, I have about the next 25 minutes, so I'm probably going to knock down a little of this first little part. I am going to hit on a couple of bigger topics here in this next section. So just a really quick recap for our 2024 season. We did about 1.1 million people across the port of Ketchikan. That's all four berths. Very successful, very few accidents. You know, it's what we're looking for is a lot of the safety issues, keeping everybody moving across our port into the town and off onto their tours or whatever excursions they have. We did have quite a few ships at berth this, or at anchor this year. They would start on anchor, and then they would move in to one of the berths, which helps because you're taking away one of those moving parts of boats going back and forth, people having to step into a lighter, step out of a lighter. So that was good to see. We just don't have quite the room to get all four of those big ships in at once, so being able to move one in once there was room really helped out in that regard. One of the biggest problems that we had on the port was congestion with vehicles. Mr. Kuz, I know he can probably talk to this. He did a lot of our organization of buses and vehicles down, especially on berth four. It just gets tight. We don't have any space. Berth three was probably the worst. Just, we had to start moving people off if they were sitting for very long. We're probably going to tighten that up a little bit here this next year, just so that we can keep things moving on the port. We don't want to use it as a parking lot. That's kind of, kind of what we need to do. I can go right into the next part, which is the hot topics, if that's okay?
Sure.
If you want me to sit down and come back or?
No, no.
Okay. I do have a couple pictures to kind of show a little bit of what I'll be talking about, and I'm not sure if we can get Lori to pull those up. First thing, ship thruster use at the port. This was a hot topic at the last meeting in March. You probably all recall. We did have a bathymetric survey done. Laurie's pulling that up right now. This is just a little section, and what this bathymetric survey did for us was it gave us a really good baseline for how things are now. So when this is up, you can see there's colored areas, and those are the areas that we did have readings on before, so there would have been work done on the port. Someone took some kind of sounding, and that's what we're comparing it to. Well, the next time we do this survey, you're going to see the whole thing in some kind of color instead of the white, surrounded by a little bit of reds and oranges and blues. The blue shades, those are all areas where there's an increase in the elevation of the bottom, so things have built up there a little bit. And then the red tan and that kind of funky yellow green, that's where there's been scour of some kind. The darkest red right in the middle, and for this section, we're looking at the area kind of right below the food court area. Berth two, which has been here, you know, been used the longest, that area. And that reading that they pulled that from was from 2012, so sometime in the last 12 years, we've lost eight feet plus of overburden in that area. Like I said, they did a grid pattern, so we're going to have readings for the whole port now. The next time this happens, the whole thing will be in color. So that was kind of one of the big things. Down the promenade stabilization project.
Craig?
Yeah.
Before you do that, can you share with the council the outreach that we did with CLIA and the cruise captains regarding the thruster use?
Okay, so with, with the whole thruster issue, we had the meeting with you guys, and then a follow-up that kind of touched on this bathymetric survey. After that, Rick and John at Cruise Lines, you know, they'd put out a little PSA for all the ships so that they could be aware that we are watching this and let them know that we do not want to have more scour if possible. So the ships were asked to use minimal power with their azipods and their thrusters. And throughout the summer, just watching, it seemed like they were almost all doing it. Ships would get close to berth one, two, three, four, and they'd slow down, and they'd sneak in. A lot of them arrive in the mornings, so the wind is usually a little bit less at those times, so they'd just sneak in and touch the dock, and, you know, it might take a little bit longer to get lines. But they were definitely adhering to that wish that we had to kind of reduce the potential impact to the bottom. So that worked out really well.
So you mentioned that that was during landing. What happened during departure?
I had a couple of conversations with captains. There were some days where they did have to power up, especially when they get that southeast, southwest wind coming and blowing them onto the dock. Most of the time, they ran at about 15% power, and that's a minimum. So as those big props go around, they have to have a certain amount of power to generate any kind of thrust. So a lot of them did just a basic, you know, as minimal power to get off the dock unless they needed it to move the ship away from town and get out into the channel. Had one really good sit-down with Captain Arno on the Conings Dam. He had volunteered to come and talk with me and one of the shop owners. And he brought a board with him. There was a model of the ship, and he could turn little dials on it and show wind direction, current, what direction the azipods were going, and he could diagram really well and explain in a very simple way kind of what the ships were doing to try to minimize this impact. He even talked about how they would go into the simulator on the ships, and they would try different configurations of the azipods to reduce the amount of thrust that's coming directly at the shore. One of those experiments that he did, and it turned out that it did not work, was he would turn the outboard azipod directly at shore, and then he would use that inboard azipod to block the flow of the water. It turned out that that did not work. He could not get enough thrust to get off, so he had to turn them into more of a configuration with one blowing forward, one blowing back at an angle, and that's how they, they got off. But they were not doing, except for that one experiment where they're trying to block the thrust, they did not have azipods pointed directly at the shore where the shore would take the brunt of that impact, so it was a little bit offset.
Thank you.
Okay. Promenade stabilization project. So this kind of goes right hand in hand with the thruster use. We are in the process right now of collecting bids for the promenade stabilization. We're expecting that project to be about $350,000. What they are going to do, and here we're going to have a little bit of a diagram. This will show how they're going to fix it. The abutment on that northern bank, so right below the Tongass Outlet Store Cruise Line Agencies, that building on the north end of the promenade, had a little bit of a sleffing of the bank. So they are going to go in and they are going to remove armor rock that has slid down onto the pilings, the structural pilings that are holding the promenade up, hopefully make those more secure, take that weight off of them. Then they're going to fill in underneath the big concrete footer to support the existing structure, and then they're going to put a little embankment, which is that kind of top right photo there or picture, and then fill in behind it, hopefully securing that from now until the end of time. Part of this project, we've talked about the wobbling in the, in the promenade, especially on that north end. At one point, we shut down the promenade to make sure it was safe. The engineers came in, took a look at it. Public Works came down, did a survey to see if there'd been movement on it, you know, if it's going to fall into the ocean. Part of this project, which isn't pictured, there's going to be cross bracing put in at bent 33. It's fairly specific. Sorry, that's about two, two bends down from the northern end, and that's where the majority of the wobble was or where it can be felt. So they're going to try to shore that up, take away a little bit of that discomfort. PNDs remain confident that the promenade is safe. It is, like I said, just a comfort issue, and this should, should take care of some of it. If not, we'll, we'll move forward from there. About 350,000 or so. We will know more on Monday when those bids are opened. This project scheduled for substantial completion April 1st, final completion the 15th of April, and it will be shut down just for the locals. So you guys know it will need to be shut down because they're going to tear out decking to get down into an area they need to be in. Questions there?
Any questions? Was he? Yes.
I have the previous comment about the thrusters.
Yes.
And Stady, you talked about using tugboats to get the ships on.
The, there's always the option for tugboats, and the ships know this, so we did see them more this summer. I think in 2023, saw tugboats maybe twice. And then this last summer, there were multiple occasions where they would have tugs actually on standby outside the ship, ready to be used if necessary. So there was a definite increase this year than there was the year before, and I would imagine that'll continue to be the norm. If they're needed, they are there. But they, I don't know if they ever used them. They might have used them once, but they were on standby, ready to go if necessary.
So the tugboats, because of the size we have in Ketchikan, they're really just an assist. They couldn't probably handle a ship such as a tractor tug. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the last one, cathodic protection, and this is a big one. We did have one interruption this year that stems from cathodic protection. We we moved a ship in September further up berth one, more towards berth two, so that we could get in. Soon you see his picture, you'll be impressed. Uh we had our maintenance guys running down to um just move a boat and it was a low tide and they look over. And some of the ride piles that the Yokohamas slide up and down on to stay even with the water. How would look like a a hole in it. So they went over and got closer and they looked and sure enough, there was a hole. Then this isn't the one. They went and looked at a few more, and this is all on the end of berth one. Uh we had about six ride piles. They either had a hole uh like a half dollar size, so getting ready to really be a problem. And then uh all the way up to what you see here with uh major damage uh needing to be replaced. So there's quite a few pilings down there. Most of those pilings that they saw on that morning. Were south side of the fender walls. So there's a north and a south for each one. Sorry, um. It was mostly the southern uh ride piles that were failing. This one that you're looking at here, which was one of the more majors, maybe the most, uh was a north uh side ride piling. So we had failure on both sides. Um not really a good thing. The good news is that the ride piles are not structural, so we are not holding the port up with these pipes. Um but you could extrapolate that to some of the larger, heavier pipes in the area that do not have cathodic protection. You're probably going to be looking at something like this uh further down the road. So cathodic protection remains our number one priority. Um we've moved forward with this quite a bit this year. There was a study in two thousand sixteen that said we're going to have some problems. Nothing was done with that. So whether it was COVID or lack of funds or poor planning, uh nothing ever happened with that. So now we're we're to a point where it has to happen. Um P and D, some engineers have, you know, looked at the port multiple times. They've. Looked at what kind of is what is existing, what needs to be replaced, and they've put together a priority list which involves all of the port. Uh getting cathodic protection on all the pilings, the bends. Uh beams, because we have issues with high tides coming up and touching the bottom of the port. Uh it's not quite far enough out of the water with some of those big tides, especially the ones we're getting in the fall. Uh these are the big, big highs. You know, those Thanksgiving storms are exasperated because the the very high tides we have right now at this time. So they were able to come up with a very rough estimate and a about a six to eight year repair plan. That's going to run us about with today's dollar, about thirty-eight million dollars. Um so not a little. Like I said, we're moving forward with these projects to get things rolling as fast as we can. Permitting alone is about eighteen months on these projects. So we are already looking at repairs that cannot happen until. The fall of twenty twenty-six at the very earliest. Um we won't be doing the repairs hopefully in the middle of summer. So hopefully everything holds together, gets us through, and we can start here in a couple of years, really getting in and fixing all of our infrastructure. Get that all up to where it needs to be, and then we'd have everything on a repair schedule. So we'd replace the anodes, uh regalvanize if we need to. Uh get everything where we're not playing catch up and we're kind of ahead of things. And then we can talk about. Making changes to the port if that's the will of the council, the city, everybody else.
So this is, this is pretty dramatic and it's fortunate that that isn't structural, but like you said, we can just carry that. On under the port and assume that we're going to have something similar.
Yeah, if you look back, so there's a little gap. So there's the ride pile and then on the right of the picture, that's the surf wall, which is wood. And then right in between, you can see the pile, a large pile, thicker walls. Uh much larger diameter. It's about twenty-four inch. Those pipes that are the ride piles are about ten inches. So quite a bit bigger piling and it has a lot of the same rust and everything. It is thicker. It'll take longer for it to fail. Um but we do need to get moving on on these projects and that's the plan we have going forward.
So we do have some cathodic protection on some of the port right now that's in place.
There is.
That needs to be cleaned and scoured and.
I think one of the biggest problems is it's not consistent. So there are a lot of birth two. And this happened, this picture right here was um October eighteenth, about eight o'clock at night. We were down there with the uh one of the construction companies, because they were kind of looking at what they would need to do to fix these. And while we were down there underneath in the skiff, the tide was low enough that you could see anodes on parts of berth two. On the actual structural pilings, the batter piles, they had large ninety-pound anodes. For cathodic protection. So there is some, there they, we do have pile wraps on some of the pilings, which helps with that corrosion. Um a lot of those wraps have failed or are slipping, getting ready to fail. So it all needs to be looked at, needs to be protected completely. There needs to be work done on the steel where the rust and the corrosion is ground off. And then re galvanized. And that all costs money. And then you're working over water. Uh so we have an EPA issue there. We need to address, make sure that it's clean. Uh we're not releasing a bunch of chemicals into the ocean itself.
Is that all part of the thirty-eight million dollar plan?
All of it.
Is that, is that in addition to?
No, this will all be, this is their cost right now if we were to do it today.
Okay.
Um everything.
And and you said um six to eight years, but we can't start until twenty or can't start till twenty twenty-six. So we're looking twenty thirty-four before?
No, so we will start with the berth one and two. That's our number one priority. They're in the worst shape, needs to be addressed. So that will start as soon as the budget's approved. Wink wink. And we will get moving on that. Uh with permitting, planning, design, what exactly needs to be done. Uh next year, you're going to see another one of our high priorities put in. Birth one and two is definitely the number one. So hopefully within eight years, it's done.
Alright.
That would be the plan.
Great, Jay.
This structure of the dam, has there been, has some preventative maintenance been done?
As far as I know, there's not been a lot of preventative maintenance for the entire port. Um our guys in the maintenance department, they did get cathodic protection on the uh. Uh sheet pile of berth four. That was one where you could see the anodes had been eaten away. So they were welded on. With a steel bar and the anode goes around that and gets eaten away over time. But you could see just those steel bars were all that was left. So we knew that there was absolutely none left on that sheet pile wall on berth four. This, you're probably going to see a uh, I'm going to ask for money this year to fix the ride piles. That's going to be about a hundred thousand dollars. Um that's with mobilization, uh the work being done, demobilization and the the pipes themselves. Um so you're going to see that this year at one of your regular council meetings. Um going forward, uh the hope is to get the highest priorities out of the way first. So that we are moving on it and we do not end up in a critical failure. We have an emergency, start anchoring ships up instead of having them tie up.
So one of the problems I have is the the port of Ketchikan, the community of Ketchikan, public owned docks and the one that we leased. We have, we have four of those. General has two and we only try to do it with half the money because we only get two and a half dollars out of the full five. So we're not receiving that full funding and uh the other portion of that goes to the borough. And they're also receiving the full five dollars from Ward Cove. And yet um we don't see any of that to the port. And so we have to make up that revenue in some manner because that that port out there is just a conduit for commerce in the community. And I I would hope that with our partnership here with the cruise lines that we can. Lobby the state to get some of the money that billing in the accounts there. Um to help with cathodic protection and probably not just in Ketchikan. You're going to see that in other ports up and down southeast. And if we're not getting enough funds to support and maintain these and we have a dock failure, that means we don't have a ship at the dock. And that affects everyone. And so I'm a little concerned about that. And I know that the Ocean Ranger money is just sitting in a. Account growing without any direction. So I I think there's a a bigger picture here in regards to how we approach the funding of these so that we can maintain them long term. And I'd like to have that discussion at some point. So, yes, Delilah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um I've actually tasked Laurie and Craig to come up with projects to request some of the borough funds. So we can make that request during their budget cycle also. Um things that are specific to what CPV needs to be used for. So we will plan to make presentations to the council early next year. To get council compliance with making those requests from another agency. I completely agree with your comment that we do need to work on our lobbying side. At the state level and we'll definitely talk to our state lobbyists about that because there are funds building. In the state coffers that we can request and and need to make those efforts. Um finally, I want to mention that as P and D has done this thirty-eight million dollar study, now that we know what our immediate needs are. We will be plugging in the port rates into the Waterworth model also. In order to see what those need to look like in order to meet the capital needs. So we'll have that combination to be able to demonstrate to council, this is what it looks like and that's what the model looks like. And that should help us with more future decision making.
And and that'll be with all the capital projects because we're still looking at a potential dolphin on berth three and then we have the. Ballard updates and whatever else may come to.
That's correct. And the problem Craig hit the nail on the head. We haven't really done any big planning since two thousand sixteen to say this is what we need. But now that we've done that. Um now that we understand our, we have our rate structure and code, we have all our financials done, we could start loading those into models, but we needed the capital picture.
Thank you. And yes, Jay.
They mentioned that eight hundred thousand, the budget you have is uh emergency fixes. And we wish the borough, the borough has many times said that they would help us with specific projects and we approve the borough, they give the five dollars off. Ward Cove capacity by using our infrastructure downtime, we're not getting anything. Can we have them? Give us something towards that hundred thousand.
I hadn't planned to ask for the hundred thousand. We're pretty sufficient in this current budget year to cover it, but I would like the reproach of the council. Authorizing, yes, this is what the projects are priority for us and and for us to make that ask. But we can definitely reach out. I know it's difficult because once they set their budget, it's set. But I'd like to approach it for the next budget because they start for a July budget start date in January and make sure that's in their next budget cycle.
Thank you. Any other question? Continue.
That's it. That wasn't enough. Alright, thank you, guys.
Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, if we'd like to stick with infrastructure, we can have Seth come up next to talk about the spruce mill promenade expansion.
Thanks, Seth.
Hello, everyone. Seth Brackey, the Public Works Director and Engineering Manager for the City of Ketchikan. Uh good afternoon. Thanks for having me. Uh today, I'd like to talk about the Spruce Mill Promenade Project. Uh this is a little bit different than the section that Craig talked about. Uh he was talking about a repair to. Uh the promenade nearest berth floor. This is a segment that's down by berth one, nearest the lumberjack show. Uh so this is a project that we've been working on for a long time. So there's excitement that will hopefully get it. Connected and have the last segment completed here. So the city's worked with P and D engineering to develop uh designs for this final segment. And then recently in April, we were notified by the state of Alaska uh that they're planning to award us a five million dollar tap grant. For the project. This would also require a local match of about two point five million dollars. Which we would plan to provide utilizing CPV funding as a local match. Let's see.
And that is in your handout packet? Do you want to look at the drawing?
Yeah, so we have uh within the packet a little map showing the segment in red that we that this project would address. So with this project completed, it would give a continuous waterfront promenade from start to end. So it'd be a real improvement for the community.
So Seth, are we doing anything with the sheet pile wall in that area?
Right, so this project would address that, would would help to stabilize that issue.
Okay, okay.
So as far as next steps, um we need to finalize and then execute a memorandum of agreement with DOT. So we'll be doing that or bringing it back to the city council for approval. Uh there needs to be additional public and stakeholder involvement, so public meetings, et cetera, to to get more involvement from the area. Then we'll work on the finalization of the design, then move to bidding, award and construction. So in regards to schedule, the DOT indicated that their funding would be available. In federal fiscal year twenty twenty-eight. Uh we hope to accelerate that a little bit because we've got a lot of the groundwork already started with P and D, including some of the permitting. So we'll work with DOT on that to try and accelerate it as best we can. So that's all I had. Are there any questions on this segment?
Delilah, yeah.
Seth, I I just wondered if you could, if there aren't any other questions, expand on any impacts of Tongus and DOT projects in the port area? But only if if there are no other questions on the promenade.
Uh any other comments on the promenade extension?
Yes, Jay.
Um I believe that we've already paid for a lot of that in-house. Um Delilah, I'll defer to you though historically on the design.
I think that's already been paid through CPV funds and it was completed for the application. I believe it was CPV funds. I'm looking at Lacy, she knows, but yes, it was.
And that would be considered part of the match?
We'll have to look at the grant agreement. Sometimes they do allow preliminary work as your match as well as forced labor, which is, you know, our workforce labor. But we won't know until we get the grant agreement.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, no other questions on the promenade section. Um just briefly touch on. Uh some of the projects that the Alaska DOT has planned for Congress Highway. Uh to summarize, they have a lot of work planned. We've been participating in meetings with the DOT specific to uh would be from. Dick's Body Shop, the West Flight Building, um all the way to the tunnel. They plan a pretty significant rebuild on that section of both the viaduct sections and then sections that are on dirt. Including a filling in the section at Shonbar Road. Uh the intersection of Shonbar and Tongus slash Water Street there. So over the next seven years, there'll be a lot of highway work through the DOT. City of Ketchikan, of course, will be coordinating utility work, water, sewer, electrical, et cetera, uh within that corridor as well.
Jay.
Yeah, I think that's the current plan.
And the city have a plan. There's a lot of buses and food, the air is coming down from Ward Cove and other areas using that area. We have a plan where we can mitigate congestion and other traffic problems. congestion and other traffic problems.
Yeah, it's definitely a big concern. We're a role player in that with the DOT and we've already expressed that. And I think there'll be additional opportunities as the as the project develops to continue to express that because it's important. All right, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Is there any update on any other topics this time? So with that, we'll move on to item C is the force cost allocation study.
Mr. Mayor, I thought of something. Sorry. I have a backseat. I do would like to thank Craig and his work and his team and his work with Lexington. We did apply for a port security grant. We were not granted. There were six communities in Alaska that received those grants and it was significant funding. But the team is working with our grant writer to find out where we could have scored higher, what we could do, and our intent is to again, apply for those monies when it opens up. So unfortunately, we were not a recipient. I know we get deemed because we're not a cargo port, but we do service a lot of ships and a lot of work in the harbor as well as the port. So we'll be trying again on the next cycle.
Thank you.
Okay.
So you're up next?
Yes, sir. Alrighty. So attached with this meeting and presented at the October seventeenth council meeting was the cruise passenger cost study, which was prepared by McKinley Research Group at the city's request. And the purpose was to evaluate the financial impacts of cruise passengers on our municipal services and infrastructure. So the council had asked, how do we know what cruise is impacting and our city operations? We know what it is on the port because we have to have port security, we take care of port infrastructure. The port's an easy answer. We have the berth four lease, those those are costs that we know exist at all times. And so what we wanted to know is how does that also impact service services provided by the city? So just as a summary of the findings, McKinley used the twenty twenty three cruise year, and that's because that's we had the financial books were closed. Our audits were closed for twenty twenty three, we had all the final numbers, everything was was input. Please keep in mind that we have an impact of about one point five million visitors, even though only about one million, one point one million come to the port of Ketchikan. And that's because the the dock at Ward Cove receives the NCL passengers who then come into the city and impact those services. So Ward Cove is building out more of the tourist opportunities in that area, but still majority of the passengers will embark and come into the city of Ketchikan and we see that impact. So we, on the study, it did take that one point five million number, but remember, we don't, it's not one point five million to the port of Ketchikan, it's only one point one million. So we found in the in the study, it's about a five dollar and forty three cent per passenger impact to all our services. And the way the study works is it outlines marginal costs as well as what are called overhead costs. I don't like that terminology. It's more of a general fixed cost expenses impacted. And just as you, if you're baking a pie, you have to make a bigger pie if you have more guests. And so you're going to need a bigger pie pan and that that takes some some overhead costs to make that adjustment. So it came out to three point seven million on both sides, the marginal impact as well as the general impact. The biggest departments impacted, obviously port harbors. That's a big one. A big portion of that cost is not only operations, but about the two point three million that we pay for the berth board lease every year. Our fire department was next with about one point four million. We had approximately, just in twenty twenty three, two hundred and sixty cruise related costs. And I know Chief Hines is here. That went up for twenty twenty four, didn't it? When we got the initial numbers, correct? So so we did see an increase in twenty twenty four. We just got those numbers in and Rick's been great at communicating with the the medical groups on the ships. The next obviously was the police department because we have more downtown patrols, traffic enforcement. And surprisingly, following that, not surprisingly, we all knew it anecdotally, but our public works is impacted. So that includes solid waste management, facility maintenances, maintenance. We do a lot of street cleanup. We we have a beautiful port. Everybody I talked to who has cruised to Ketchikan that I know always comments about how clean our port is and how clean the area is and and how nice it looks. So that's that's a huge compliment to our crews. So with that cost, that eight million or so in in total costs, we also generate revenue. And what's interesting is that there is sixteen million, sixteen point six million in cruise related revenue. So that includes the fourteen million, fourteen point five we receive in port fees, which is dockage, warfage and related fees. The one point eight million from commercial CPV, commercial passenger vessel tax. And they're estimating about seven million in sales tax revenue. So when you all get your transmittal letter on the budget, you will see we collect the majority of our taxes, almost, I want to say seventy five percent. Oh darn, Lacy's phone. But I think it was something like seventy five percent of our sales tax comes in that seasonal portion when we have visitors. And twenty five percent comes from the community on the off season. So with that, it demonstrates that, yes, we are collecting funds for our operations. The things that we are missing is we have not capitalized our capital needs over time. So in other words, we haven't listed in ten years' time the depreciation of that port. We haven't listed the twenty year time depreciation of infrastructure replacement. That was not included in our financial statements. So those costs of future infrastructure replacement are not built in. That's what we're trying to do with all our rates for the utilities, the port, the harbors, wastewater, is we're building our long-term capital expenses into rates such that we have capital investment funds that are going to be built out and planned out in order to make those big infrastructure changes. So that part we were missing and it's not part of the study because we didn't have it in our financial statements. Craig just testified that he's doing that work with PND to make that analysis. So that will change as far, so I'm not going to say we're collecting sufficient revenue to meet our needs. I'm saying pursuant to what is reflected in twenty twenty three financial statements, it looks like we're doing okay in that in that sense. However, one of the issues is, are we properly allocating our warfage fees to meet the needs of those impacted services, which we are not doing. And that's something that Finance, the council adopted this study at the October seventeenth meeting with instruction to staff to do a full analysis of what those needs and impacts are to each division. I will tell you for the twenty twenty five budget, I have changed some of the allocation schedules. And what I mean by an allocation schedule, and I apologize for our our members of the public, the city has what we call shared services. And so every division and department pays a percentage into human resources, for example. So we do that by FTEs. The division with the most FTEs will pay the most of the HR expenses. Same with city manager and my office, half comes from KPU, half comes from general government. So we have allocations set that haven't been changed in several years. And so what we did is in twenty twenty five, you'll see we're allocating more of our HR expenses and our finance expenses to the port because of the tremendous amount of work they have to do. Finance has to reconcile not only the CPV funds in the audit reports, but they also do so for the warfage tax and dockage fees. They do that reconciliation. In addition to that, the port hires approximately fifty employees every season. And that's a tremendous burden on HR and on finance. So we are trying to get tools in place to to make those a lot easier next year on us as far as staff. But when it comes to allocation, we weren't properly allocating the expenses. And so you'll see some changes where I've shifted a few more of the percentages toward the port to truly reflect what the shared services are are doing in support of that port. And we want to do that for the whole organization, for KPU, wastewater, harbors, all of it. We want to make sure our allocations are correct. So Finance and I will actually be pursuing even more changes for twenty twenty six. With that, we also, this gives us an investment or base for which we can talk about our agreement of what is allowed expense with warfage fees. That way everybody's on the same page. I do want to mention with the study, oh, I did write it down, yay. We invested four hundred and fifty eight thousand in capital improvements in twenty twenty three. We all know, Craig especially knows, that's not sufficient for investment on the port. So that was a good not wake up call, we already knew it was happening. The one thing the study mentions but cannot quantify are intangible costs. And these are things like disruption to our construction services, strain on staff availability during the cruise season, maintenance of our public amenities that are heavily used by passengers, those things, inconvenience of traffic. I I always tease people, you know, our long-term residents because when they tell me it's congested downtown, I'm like, you gotta be kidding me because I'm used to a larger city where congestion is, it took me thirty minutes to go a couple of miles, whereas, you know, this doesn't feel like congestion, but it's relative. Our our quality of life expects us to have easy movement throughout the island. And so our perception is that we have too much congestion. And so that you can't reflect that in a dollar amount with the study. So it does reference that those intangible costs do exist, but they're not quantified. And that's something that we have to keep in mind for our citizens. And I know Laurie might be able to speak a little bit about Disney coming in to visit, about our people movement. So that that's sort of our the intro. And Laurie, I don't know if I kind of covered everything, but if you have anything to add.
Well, you did kind of talk about some of my stuff. The only other thing that I guess after what Delilah just said that I want to share with you is a message from the finance department. I know that when we presented this study, there was a concern that it would be put on the shelf and get really dusty and it would just be another report that nobody cared about or used. And I want to assure you that is not what's happening with this information. But the finance department did want to share the message that due to being in the middle of the annual budget process and the little landslide we had, the landslide recovery efforts, the finance staff has not had the bandwidth to do the kind of analysis that needs to happen with this data. So Finance did with the managers help adjust allocations for human resources and the finance department. But and when their their goal is that when the port budget is brought to you in the budget process, that there will be an update to that with cost allocations. But that's definitely going to depend on other priorities that they have and how the budget process rolls out if they'll have the time to make that change by December. So I do want to assure you that Finance is working on this.
Thank you. Any any question? Yes, Jay.
That's an excellent question. Thank you, Councilmember Matani. And I think it's good for the public to understand. I know the council member already knows the answer to this and so do ours because you see the budget. But yes, we do. We actually charge a portion of our CPV to police. We use it to pay for the trash pickup in public works, the extra bins that we have to put out. We also use it for supplement to the fire department. So they are small numbers. We've done it sort of anecdotally saying, okay, we've got X number of firefighters, so many response, we think it amounts to this amount. But now we have a real number that is justified and we can make those adjustments. Once Finance does that, they take those numbers, pull back what we're already doing, we'll know if there's more allocation that can happen.
So one of the things in the report was especially in regards to the fire department is it came back with, we only get ten percent reimbursement. And and I I would figure that these guys are have some kind of insurance or Medicare and Medicaid and we we bill through those. And so I don't, I'm not sure if we're getting any financial, I guess, help through that process, but it's only ten percent.
We we do have our ambulance building and everything's negotiated by CMS, which is the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare. In addition to that, it's private insurance company. So we do bill out EMS throughout the entire nation is never one hundred percent reimbursed to the cost to run it. So the way the the city works is we say we need X number of ambulances on call, on duty to respond to what we anticipate to be our call volume. And so obviously it increases during the cruise season. But I'll be honest with you, call volume in Ketchikan is high, no matter the season. And and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong in that with call volume. We do see an impact from the cruise ships, but we have a pretty high call volume as a community when I look at other communities.
Yes, Mayor, council members and guests. During the cruise ship season, we do see an increase. But if you average out our responses over a year, we're we're responding to on average nine calls a day. And and that number's been decreased a little bit with our mobile integrated healthcare. But it's it's really for us, it's the population density downtown when the cruise ships are here. The more the more people you put in an area, there's a higher propensity for needing EMS or fire or police. And these are nationally proving statistics that people have analyzed. So the the more the more people we put downtown, we're going to have higher higher run volumes. Secondly, our community is aging. And and so there's a higher demand. Our acuity level of responses, meaning the seriousness of our responses, it is rather high as far as the amount of drugs, medication and how sick the the folks are that that we're transporting generally. So, yes.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, Rick, if you could explain, just give a brief update on your conversation with medical director with cruise lines and, you know, just what they've said about our crew and our response team and and what we have available in Ketchikan.
Yeah, so I started working, all of the Southeast Alaska started working with the Coast Guard to pilot a project of where is it appropriate to offload your patients? And in Southeast Alaska, it's Juno, Sitka and Ketchikan. Those are the three hospitals, the three locations that have hospitals that are capable of managing these patients. So what you've seen, they're they're trying to reduce the number of airlifts. They did roughly three hundred and sixty airlifts last year during cruise ship season. It's very dangerous, it's very taxing. And then they've used some of the boats, but we're trying to reduce that and say, hey, can you leave this patient on your boat until they get to Ketchikan? Because those hospitals are quite well equipped on those boats, like I don't know if you've never experienced, but they take care of some very, very sick people. So in communicating with the flight surgeon for the Coast Guard, he may say, no, we're not sending a helicopter out. Your your best bet is to make full speed to Ketchikan. So we've implemented some things fire department wise. This year, we were able to take our first ventilator patient. We borrowed a ventilator, talked to our medical director and we took a ventilated patient off the cruise ship. It's the first time it's been done in Southeast Alaska. Next year, hopefully if my budget goes through, we'll be purchasing our own ventilators to increase our level of care. But one thing that was said, and I think it was Dr. Scott Carnival, is he Carnival? Yeah, yeah, he's a fantastic guy. He actually came to Ketchikan, visited with me last year, took me on board a couple of the boats to meet the doctors. But what he said was out of all the Southeast communities in Alaska, it is the easiest to move sick people off those boats in Ketchikan. We sort of show up, we do our thing, we move them to the hospital. Some of the other communities, even with hospitals, they say we don't have the capacity to handle this patient right now. So you can't unload them. A couple of times last year where there were really sick patients in Juno. They they couldn't get offloaded in Juno, they couldn't get a hospital with the receiving person. So the sick folks sort of floated to Ketchikan and we took them. Also, another thing that we did last year is we we sort of tried to shorten the time to definitive care. Several times last year, we would, a a medevac company would come in, they would go directly on the ship, they would stabilize the patient. And when they were ready, we would pick them up and take them to the airport for transport, which in the long run saves us, right? Because most of these cruise ship patients, we handle twice at least. Once from the cruise ship to the hospital and once from the hospital to the airport for the medevac. So saying that we did two hundred and sixty eight or two hundred and eighty runs to cruise ships, you probably got to truthfully double that number because they need definitive care off the island. So.
So.
Jay. Yeah, can you use your microphone? Excuse me. Yes.
Excuse me, sorry about that. Based on the two hundred and sixty-eight runs and you say the costs could double. I understand I had a conversation with you briefly about this. Are we getting any compensation? Are we working with the cruise lines to see that? I think ten percent is not enough for the work our people put in, for the overtime our people put in. Is there work in progress that we can re, recover more than ten percent?
Yeah, yes, the, the manager and the finance staff has, has really been working on this. And, and I think as we develop relationships with the cruise line agencies directly, there's also some opportunity there with the community relations or some of the governmental funding sources they have. We have the Lucas CPR device. Have you guys seen this? It's a, it's a mechanical CPR device. We were on the cruise ships with five times within one week using that device. And not all of those folks came off the cruise ship. But once the cruise ships found we had that device, we would show up with, I think the one we, how many people? Two, four? I think we put six or seven members of our staff on the cruise ship to help manage this patient in cardiac arrest, because they had multiple other serious patients they were working with. So I think as those opportunities and understandings develop, I think there's always a, an opportunity to try to get some of the governmental affairs money to help with equipment and, and some capital things that we need.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could pull on that, that thread a little bit more, and Councilmember Matani. Everything that our fire department has done has been to improve the response and the services we offer to the city of Ketchikan citizens. And because we've improved that, we've become a better visit stop for it. But I want to emphasize to our public that everything Rick has done and pursued has been in service to our citizens, but that does benefit any visitor to Ketchikan. And so we want to make sure we capture the true cost of those expenses in order to ensure that we're supporting our divisions completely and correctly.
Yeah, yes, and we increased our staffing when the cruise ships are in town. One of my overall concerns is somebody in our community having to wait on an ambulance that lives here year-round. It's sort of the things that keep me up at night, right? Right now, thirty percent of my calls occur when my on-duty crew is on a call and those folks just have to wait, because we have to call in off-duty folks who have to get up and come to the station. And quite honestly, they're tired. Sometimes we don't get the turnout we need. The last few weeks, probably once a week, we've had three calls occurring at once. It's, it's not uncommon. I wish we could space them out a little more. If we could work on that, it would probably help us all a bunch. But yeah, I, I think as we improve our care, you know, something like IV Tylenol and some other medicines we're starting to carry, the IV pumps, the ventilators, the CPR machines. We have really, really helped prolong and improve people's lives who are in these critical or serious conditions that we take to the hospital. Councilmember Kistler and.
Yeah, you've been working on a fireboat, getting a fireboat to Ketchikan. And I don't know if you've had any talks with the cruise lines about how that might help them and how they might help us.
So quite frankly, Dr. Scott and I spent some time talking about this. There's a section of what they call no man's land between Canada and, and Ketchikan, where if they have to offboard somebody and the US Coast Guard can't or won't come and get them, then they turn to the Canadian Coast Guard and they have to turn around and go into Canada. I know Juno, port calls in Juno were missed a couple of times this year because of that. And that's a significant cost to the cruise line agencies. Like, it's a lot of money. So we're not opposed to working some type of agreement where if, if they would be willing through their government affairs office to help fund our fireboat, then we would, you know, the, the sky's the limit, as long as the manager agrees within the agreement to, to accomplish those things and help maybe cover that no man's land where they're sort of out in limbo if they have a patient that needs to come off. I, I think the, my preliminary budget, the fireboat is in next year, but it's only funded if we get a grant. So there's no, you know, lease finance or no purchase. So I, I think there's opportunity out there. I didn't get a grant this year. I applied for, most of the port security grants went to the New Yorks and the Los Angeles. I've had a few meetings about trying to help get them to re-tier those grants from tier one or tier two, so that not all of those large cities encumber all of that money that we can have some smaller money. So I've been in contact with a couple of legislatures on that and trying to figure out how we could maximize points to work on getting those grants.
Councilmember Theng.
Hey, Chief Wallace, thanks for being here. Just with respect to that no man's land, do you have a sense of how far, what would be the furthest reach from town for coverage waters?
Well, I so described. I think I've looked at it a few times on the map. We would have them make full force toward Juno, speed their boats up. And we probably would, would, would cut out, ride out to the Gulf of Alaska, straight out from Ketchikan, come up alongside that boat and bring it back. And, and a lot of that's depending on the seas, the weather, staffing and what, what the fireboat can tolerate. But if we can keep them moving toward their original port, and as they get close to us, we can pull up alongside them and grab the patient. I think that's the benefit. I really don't want to run a fireboat three hours away from here, because you start talking fuel, weather. How much medication do you have onboard to try to keep this patient stable for that three-hour trip back? Because these are really the sickest of the sick when this happens. You know, it's, it's not somebody with a, the flu or something like that or a positive COVID. These are people that are really complex sick people.
Yes. Can you just, for the sake of the public and everybody?
Are you using your mic? You're on.
For the sake of the public and everybody, can you just tell us the cost of getting this boat?
So we priced the boat out last year and it was eight hundred and eighty thousand roughly. It might be up a little bit, because we wanted to go with a little bit bigger boat, so it has more of a draft and can hold a little more fuel. When the consultants came in and we did a consultant study for the firebird, they recommended a one point five million dollar fireboat. Justice, it's absolutely too big for our city. And, and so we, when we specked it out, it was right at, just under nine hundred thousand dollars.
So my concern is if we're only getting ten percent reimbursement on an ambulance call, what do we get on a boat call?
So we do what's called S E M T funding. So the federal government, because we do this S E M T funding, or the state government gives us a reimbursement check based on what it costs to run the ambulance service and why we get reimbursed. I don't have the exact numbers with me, but I think roughly if you take the whole look at the ambulance service, the buildings, the equipment, it costs us the city about four thousand dollars in ambulance call. Now, when you look at that call number, because we carry medical equipment on our ladder and on our fire engines, that also factors into the cost. And the reason we do that is we get a higher reimbursement rate. This year, we're projected to get two point two million dollars from the state in S E M T funding. We've been really fortunate and blessed, because we've been able to put that money directly into refurbishing, replacing ambulances, buying the ventilators, upgrading our equipment, which, which is sort of really important in improving that. So we do get some money back, but I, I, I don't know. You know, the, the cruise ship passengers are in the shoulder seasons or your Medicare and your Medicaid folks. When we get into the, the, the more expensive cruise ship seasons, that's our highest payer mix in Ketchikan all year long. So we get the greatest amount of reimbursement from their private insurance companies than, than we do versus just the Medicare and Medicaid folks. And it's, it's very complicated. And that's why we have a billing agency. They'll call me and say, hey, look, you're only charging this much per mile. You need to charge this much. You're not going to get reimbursed for all of it, but it's going to give you maximum reimbursement for Medicare and Medicaid, which, which is just really, the whole thing is cumbersome, to say the bad, to say the least.
Well, thank you, Chief, for what you and your crew do. Does anybody have, anybody else have questions for the chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Delilah, you have anything else?
Yep, I think that's pretty much it on, on that end, on the impact study. And, and we will be moving forward, as Lori mentioned. We need to do some work with finance. We made some adjustments for FY twenty-five. But I imagine, once we do that, we'll be able to put in those numbers and into the rate engine. And that's going to make a really good projection for everybody.
Thank you. Let me move us on to item D, update status of memorandum of agreement between the City of Ketchikan Cruise International Association.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, at the end of our work session in March of this year, one of the big asks was that we come up with some sort of memorandum of agreement or agreement between ourselves and, and Cruise Line International Association of Alaska. And so for the public's benefit, the reasons came to, to an idea or a request or directive by the council was, as we all know, Juno has a settlement agreement in place with the use of their warfage funds. And I won't go through the whole history of it. Number one, because Lacey's way better at summarizing that than I, she's been through it longer. But essentially what it is, is everybody agreeing to what is an appropriate use of warfage fees. Now, CPV funds are completely different. Those are already regulated through State of Alaska statutes. So there is already law and guiding law on how CPV funds can be used. The responsibility and onus on the city when it comes to CPV spending is that when we get to the end of audit and we report our CPVs to the state, that it's fully justifiable under the law. So we have to be able to say, yes, this is an appropriate use of the CPV funds. If we were to get audited on our use, we could justify and defend that spending. So that's what we do. We follow the statutory requirements. Lacey, do you know if we've ever been audited on CPV? I know some communities have, but. Yeah, we're, we didn't build a way of statute. Too soon. Sorry, sorry.
It's always going to be too soon.
Yep. So, and we are very conservative in our use. And Michelle is very much a stickler, our, our finance director, Michelle Johansson. She's very, very much a stickler and follows the rules. So we are very conservative in that use. However, at the end of the day, we have to be able to justify and defend our spending. So outside of that, we now have our warfage fees. Typically, warfage fees are one hundred percent spent on the port of Ketchikan. And that's what we use to run the port. That's what we call our port fund. In addition to that, we may have some additional spending because there's impacts of the cruise ship coming to the port of Ketchikan. So we've been working with clear representatives and partners to draft the initial memorandum of agreement. I'm sorry, council members don't have it yet, but Mitch has just started reviewing it for our side. So we've had attorneys look at it from the line side. Our attorney still has not been privy to all that. He just looked at the first draft this week when he was back from, from his leave. And so we got it to a good format of what we're going to be looking at, and now Mitch is reviewing. So I, what I don't want to have happen is I take it to the council and say, hey, look, this is what we made. And Mitch is like, are you people crazy? This is not going to fly. And so we don't want to have that happen. We want your time and all the efforts and resources to be valid and have that discussion. So moving through that process, once Mitch has completed his review, we do our, our checks and balances. We have that discussion internally. We will schedule an executive session with the city council, because all we've got is sort of an outline, what I think should happen, what we think should happen, and those recommendations for you. But this is a negotiation. This is not just an open public discourse opportunity just yet. I know, and having worked for the Ketchikan City Council for the last two years, I know that's going to be very important to you, to have that public feedback and public input. But we're, we're just not at that point yet. But what will happen is once our city attorney has given his blessing and made sure we have whatever language we need to have in there, we will be scheduling time for you, for council to give us your feedback and your input. So essentially the outline, and Lori outlined it in her memo in your packet, the first step, and these are the things, the exact items that we talked about in the March twenty-seventh meeting. You, as a city council, actually gave these directives to us staff for that agreement. So number one, it's the agreed use of fees at the port of Ketchikan. Lori has in there and city float, because that's something I've added in, in the latest iteration. The reason being, city float is very much a, I don't want to say service conduit, maybe a addendum or attachment or annex to the port of Ketchikan, because there are a lot of things that happen in city float that impact our cruise lines. We actually have some small ships that berth at city float, some of those small explorer ships and discovery ships that come into the harbor and not necessarily the port. So that's a very new iteration. Renee, I don't think you've seen that yet. But that is something we're going to be considering, is that city float is, is considered part of the port of Ketchikan.
But that's, and that is where I believe the tenders tend to come in.
Tenders come in, yes.
Where most of them go to city float.
I forgot about the tenders. That's right. Yep, so for our public and people lighter in, they will come to city float. And so, so we did include that. That's a very new iteration when my brain was functioning a couple of weeks ago. In that agreement, we'll also outline what are agreed use of fees beyond the port and city float. For the city of Ketchikan, I'm going to get this wrong. We have the downtown district designated in code with a map that is the commercial downtown something, something. Business district, yeah. Yeah, yes, downtown commercial business district. So instead of creating a new zone or a new map or a new something, we can outline this district that already exists in code. Then our agreement, we can talk about what's an acceptable use of warfage funds for that district. So these are things like restrooms, public restrooms. We've been talking about updating our sewer system to have more restrooms downtown. Increased garbage use, oh my gosh, Seth knows. We, we now, not only do we have to think about our garbage, we're trying to get bear-proof cans throughout the entire downtown area. That's very expensive. So things that are still at the service of that passenger, the vessel, the impact within that downtown district, this agreement would outline what is an acceptable use of, is it an acceptable use of warfage funds? And those are the discussions we're going to have to have. It also outlines annual work sessions. So on the March twenty-seventh meeting, I think we all discussed, that's the purpose of this meeting today. As council said, we want to meet face-to-face. We want to meet at least face-to-face once a year, at least virtually once a year. That was important to keep that communication outside of a regular city council meeting. Our council member knows, you spend three hours, those council meetings, taking care of the city business. And this is a very long and complex topic. So there was that commitment to have bi-annual work sessions. I think in the agreement, we're looking at by March thirty-first or mid-April, and then in the fall, by end of November, that we have these meetings. And then the agreement would say, why, why we're having these meetings? This first one is just to do that check back, because that's what council requested, and talk about the end-of-season issues. But in the agreement, we'll actually outline what's expected. What's beneficial about this, as well as the agreed use of funds, is that every council member in perpetuity will understand what we're doing. So one thing we did actually in the agreement, I think Lori did it in two or three versions ago, added what is a warfage fee and what is CPV? That way, every new council member, when you read that agreement, you know, this is a warfage fee. This is what CPV is, and this is how things can be used. Because if you're new to the council, it's very confusing and very convoluted. But then it also tells our public, if a citizen has a question, we can point at that agreement and the definition's already in there. So we added that. Next is the amount of the fees. And that's the point where we're really coming to council and saying, okay, what's reasonable? What is it you want to negotiate? What are we collecting? How are we setting rates? For the city, we are looking at a rate engine. So it's not going to be what we've done in the past, saying, we think we need X million dollars, so let's just raise it by a buck. And that's how we've done things. Instead of saying, you know, we projected ten years, this is what it's going to cost and, and having that data. So we'll be using that rate engine and defining how we set our fees. And then, of course, the term of the agreement. Is this going to be something in perpetuity? Is it just committing the current council? Maybe we have a agreement we revisit every few years. And that's the general outline. So I apologize to our council. I know, I told you we'll have something ready by the end of the year. We will have it ready by the end of the year, but I need the attorney to review. It's not the end of the year yet. It's still, still November. I keep thinking it's October. But I do want to sort of give you just a, a general outline of what we're looking at. I have made some edits and changes because of the impact study. And I've reviewed the Juno settlement agreement to make sure that we're doing something similar. And we know it's already been agreed to and, and we're being consistent. The reason I say that is because cruise industry is not a Ketchikan issue only. Through Alaska Cruise, it's a Southeast issue. And as you know, we are now forming the port communities of Southeast Alaska. And as you know, we are now forming the Port Communities of Southeast Alaska Association through the Alaska Municipal League in order to have those conversations, because today, we're all operating as individual cruise ports. But when we look at the industry as a whole and what we need to do for Alaska, we do have to think on a regional basis. Because that's what's going to happen. That's where our resources are going to be, go. There are big items. The one thing that's not included in the agreement, and that's for a discussion, once we get our heads around it, is port electrification. And that's one of the items we talked about in March that we haven't really taken any action on yet. So I will tell you, I know our issue right now, and I'm sorry, Mayor, would you mind if I go to port electrification?
Right ahead.
Well, I can stop. Well, how about we stop and ask any questions and then I'll go to port electrification? Because I'll keep going.
Thank you for that report. Just a question, in this agreement, the cruise industry affects our uplands. Have you included that in that agreement?
I have, and that is going to be the next. And with the agreement that we're talking about, any uplands work, those are things that we're going to have to set meetings and agree to. Like the port of Ketchikan, that's easy. If you need to do infrastructure, there's no discussion. That's what warfage fees are for. But the upland improvements will be part of that. And really what we're looking at the outline is that we all meet together and agree, yes, this is a valid upland project that can be used with those funds.
Thank you.
Great question.
So I have a question to the cruise industry in regards to meeting times. I know that you guys have a very, very busy summer season. You have, you're changing, your itinerary, you're moving, you're doing this. When we're talking about these meetings, what is the calendar that was best for you?
I mean, I think exactly what we did, you know, March before the season really kicks off. And now that the season's concluded, we can come here and have an open dialogue about, again, what worked, what didn't? What do we need to talk about going forward? So I think the cadence that we're on right now works well generally for us. If, I mean, Robert, if you have any.
Yeah, I was just going to add somewhat determined by your budgeting process.
Yes.
Right. So we want to leave enough time to meet, cuss and discuss, whatever we need to do. And you're on a calendar fiscal year, is that right? So tail end of the season-ish, it can be earlier. I think this one just got pushed back because we were all struggling to find dates. There was an election, you know, those things, but.
And we may end up with a different, I mean, I could anticipate a situation where these two meetings that we had in March and right now are separate from sitting down and talking through the passenger fee agreement projects. I think that there may be a necessity for them to be separate.
Yeah.
And maybe that's virtual, you know, with a couple of us in the room like we're doing today.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Yes. The only thing, oops. I was going to say, if we're going to schedule those now, that's great. Because finding dates is so hard. Kind of kidding, kind of not. As soon as we commit to say, hey, it's going to be September, mid-September, or October 1 or whatever, then we can all pencil that stuff in.
Good.
No, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Delilah, for the summary and the update there. I think just from a Royal Caribbean perspective and having worked with, you know, CLIA and our other partners here, as I think about the agreement that's being contemplated, it's truly an agreement that outlines how we're going to work together. So, you know, and we'll get into the details and the timing of the meetings and, you know, Jay, what's included and what's not included. And that'll all have to be worked out, obviously, before we agree to it. But really, conceptually, on a high level, you know, what we would like to get to as an industry is to agree to a process that outlines things like the budget timing, right? Where you're doing a lot of work as a body, you know, you go through, or you may not go through the manager here. And then it gives us time to review that. It gives you time to do that, right? Because the same way that you're working with different stakeholders, we essentially all go out to our own companies. We work very closely with Renee at CLIA. And so we understand that these take time. And so that's really for us what this agreement is, is we know there's an outcome. There's funds that come from the state. You have budgetary needs that you want to work on. And we want to set up and establish a process with you all that allows you to work through that at the same time that we can.
And to piggyback on that, I think, and also on what Delilah said, the players around this table are going to change often. And this agreement hopefully exists in perpetuity beyond all of us being in these roles. So that, so that we have that certainty that this is the process. You have that certainty that this is the process. And nobody's feeling like they're getting shortchanged or the process has failed. I think having that written down and established gives us all that framework and gives our, you know, the people who come after us, the people who are fortunate enough to be us in their next life.
Anything else? Electrification.
All right. So port electrification, we haven't really, that was a topic that we discussed in March. We don't really have a follow-up for it. And I'll just walk through, we have new council members and members of the public to understand. And fortunately, we have Mayor Severson, who can correct me on my summations, because he's a lot more familiar with our electric needs in the region, not just on the island with our division. So right now, the amount of electricity produced in Ketchikan at our highest peak, which is the coldest days of the winter, is sufficient. And we have sufficient power to meet that demand. Now, in the summer, we're still have the potential and ability to generate that amount of power, but it's not used like that in the summer. Our load demand is much less. We're not heating. As you all know, we've been working on a heat pump project with the Borough on a grant fund that we received, which council will be seeing on December 5th as part of our projects. With the advent of use of heat pumps, electric vehicles, our hydropower demand is going to go up. And what we want to do is be able to provide power without diesel generation. So in other words, we don't want to get to the point where our loads are so high, we have to generate with diesel power. We want it to meet our hydropower. So our first challenge when it comes to port electrification is, number one, it would be interruptible, meaning that if the community needed the power, we don't plug in a ship. Number two, it's important to remember that when ships come in for shore power, they're just plugging in to operate in hotel mode. They are not carrying big battery packs that they're trying to charge while they're in on the port of Ketchikan. I got that question and was surprised by it. But essentially, so they can run in hotel power. They're plugging in, running their operations, keeping the lights on, whatnot, while they're in dock. With that demand, it's quite sufficient. It's really shocking how much a ship would take even to run into hotel power. So the challenge with that is first, we need the infrastructure at the port. And you know, our port is not huge. We don't have tons of flatlands in Ketchikan that we can make this happen. So fortunately, those electric units are shrinking. They're not as big as they used to be. If you look at the unit in Juno versus what's available today, it's much different. So we've got the challenge of building out the infrastructure. We will need some sort of substation to bring the power in and to the port. And SEPA will have to generate more power. Ketchikan, we're at our capacity. We're generating as much power as we can. And then we buy the rest of our power from Southeast Alaska Power Agency, of which we are a member. So it's us, Wrangle and Petersburg. And that's the power that's generated at Swan Lake and Taiyi out in, in north of us. So it's our infrastructure that we have to address at the port. Second, we need enough power generated. So right now, SEPA is pursuing construction and expansion of the Taiyi generator, generations plant. And that is a third turbine. Taiyi was built out to have three turbines. We currently only operate with two. So a third turbine would give us sufficient power to meet that demand for the island year round. And then the next part is that we can't put the investment in port electrification on the backs of our Ketchikan ratepayers. So the benefit of having port electrification is you have an industrial user in the summer. So for example, if we need more substations and infrastructure and that third turbine in Taiyi, there's a cost associated with that operations that we have to recover from our rate base. If you have an industrial user in the summer, they're absorbing some of that fixed costs of the additional generation. So we can provide more generation in the winter for our own citizens, but then also meet that demand in the summer. And now you have a big industrial user who's paying for those fixed costs. We could not have port electrification and then pay for that through our rate base, which is our everyday payers, because a ship only plugs in once, we charge them for whatever that power is. That's not the rate base. And so there's a balance there. We've got to find the money for port electrification. We can't just say, okay, ratepayer, city of Ketchikan, you're going to spend $10 million so we can have port electrification. And we hope it all works out in the end. We just can't do that to the rate base. In addition to the fact that we've neglected our own electrical system for so long that we have a lot of infrastructure needs that we have to address first. So it's a real complex issue. We need the generation, we need the infrastructure, and we need the money. Those are the big things. And it really can be beneficial, because number one, we do have and are going to have regulatory requirements with the Green Corridor project. The ships are going to have requirements, regulatory requirements for clean energy. We are an excellent clean energy generator through hydropower. And at some point, we do need to be ready. It's, we can't just say, oh, well, that's somebody else's problem, or let them go to another dock, because that is what's going to have to happen. Or we're not, or we're only taking a different kind of ship. And we really, it's a very complex issue. I have no answers for you right now. I don't know if, Mr. Mayor, if you have any comments? I know you've been going through this with SEPA also.
Yeah, correct. So we have enough gas and tank. We're just, we don't have enough horsepower to get all the power out there. And that's going to take some upgrades. For the third turbine project and a substation, we're talking probably $27 million, $30 million, something like that. And the other thing, when you talk about dock electrification, if what the cruise ship does now, like in Juno, it's cheaper for them to plug in and pay the rate at Juno than it is to run their resources. But if they have to invest in port infrastructure to 10, 11, 12 million, and they have that debt service on it, that advantage probably doesn't exist any longer. And so what they can do, I think, through their, through what's happening, is they can slow down. And what that'll do is that'll change the port of calls in Southeast Alaska and how long they're going to stay in a port, or what port they may skip. So this is a complicated subject. And if it were available at a reasonable price to the cruise industry, they would plug in and use it. It also is based on how long you stay. For a six-hour port of call, 45 minutes to ramp up, 45 minutes to take it down, they'll have to figure that out, whether it's worth it or not, right? Because it's not just simple, just plug it in and you're going. You've got to match everything up and do all the stuff you need to do to make that work. And so this is a long-term discussion that we're going to have. And the city of Ketchikan, the infrastructure would probably be something like a main transmission coming off of Third Avenue, hooking up at birth for probably a million dollars per port for the infrastructure on the port. The substation, the one we're looking at is $7 million. And then the transmission line, poles and all that other kind of stuff. You know, it's an easy 12, 14 million dollar project by the time you're done with it. And we don't know where that money's coming from right now. So it is a priority. I don't think it's our main priority, but it is a priority that we'll have to continue to look at and see how the cruise industry involves in Southeast Alaska and how they share the resources or port calls that they have to make their, because they got to make a round trip tour work in a civic amount of time. And they have certain port calls they have to do. And, you know, we're looking at things like natural gas on ships. How long is this port infrastructure going to be important? And, you know, they have trouble with that too, because they can't get natural gas. Probably in Seattle, they got to go to Vancouver to get that. And then there are some other things that they can try. But so it's that partnership when we discuss this in regards to supply and demand. And I think that's what it's coming down to. Jay?
Just a follow-up question for the manager. For electrification, I understand there are a lot of federal grants out there. Are we in the process or will we be in line to apply for some of those grants?
We actually worked pretty closely. I think it was Robert that got us in touch with some grant writers. And our issue with the first or the latest round was that we don't have cargo at our port. And that was a, it was a big impetus to us, or impediment to us being able to apply. Lowry is making a meeting with another port that was able to receive an electrification grant. And so we can follow suit and see what they did and what the actions were and how we can. So we are pursuing, we are challenged by being just a cruise port. And, but hopefully, we can leverage that. Because Mayor Severson's right, we need to find the money too.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Delilah. So since, you know, we're still going to be working on an agreement, we can work on the next date of our meeting as we go through the process. If there's no other business ahead of us, then we can just go along, round for comments. So we'll start with our visitors. Robert, what do you have for us? For closing comments, anything? We'll put you on, we'll put you on the spotlight first.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. I would just refer back to the last conversation real quick on shore power. As we talked about it quite a bit back in March, and we've done a number of shore power projects around and working on a few here in Alaska. And I think the first place to start is just a feasibility, feasibility study. Because what we see is a lot of these projects get extraordinarily expensive, depending on how much city streets you have to tear up to get to the power, those kinds of things. And what we can do from an industry perspective is to provide sort of the demand side of what, you know, annualized call volume and so forth, to figure out the, really the business case underlying, to see if it's, where it fits amongst priority. You've got a lot of other big priorities in Ketchikan with a waterfront that needs to be fixed. That picture was, I think, eye-opening for everybody. And, and so, you know, there's a lot of things to get done here. So, but just wrapping up from my perspective, I think this is, as I've shared before, getting together is always the right way to go. I think we can work through the timing of our schedule. And I look forward to getting the draft and the agreement out so that everybody has a chance to respond to that. That will be, I think, a historic step forward in our relationship in the basis for which we can work forward on some of these more tricky subjects going forward. So other than that, just appreciate the time to be here with you all.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to echo what Robert said, agree with that. I would like to take a brief moment, just to make sure that this doesn't go too far before it's clarified. And I think the public commentary has, is no longer here. But Royal Caribbean Group is not bringing the Star of the Seas to Alaska. That is a, that is an icon class ship. And I believe it's actually the Star Princess, which is from my colleague here, which is a vastly different class of ship. So the information in front of me is accurate, down to the detail. However, I think the companies are switched and there's a big difference.
So to be clear, we do not have a passenger 700, 7,800 passenger ship.
That is a ship from our company, from my company, that's in the Caribbean. So the, and there are no plans to bring that ship to Alaska. So, yes. So with that clarification, I really appreciate the opportunity to meet. I think this is a great model to work on and working in other communities. I think that this is definitely the right way to work. And I appreciate that. Mayor, Laura, for your work. Delilah, I really appreciate you guys making sure we get together. And again, there's a lot of areas we can work on. And one of the ways to do that is just by agreeing how we're going to do that in areas such as these meetings, the topics we're going to discuss. Again, there'll never be a shortage of challenges through the work that you do and we do. But these are great places to start on it. So thank you.
Renee?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Preston. I was really hoping you were going to come through with that. I, you know, I think we all know, sitting here, that the Alaska market remains really strong for the cruise.
Um, I, you know, I think we all know sitting here that the Alaska market remains really strong for the cruise industry. And I think that the vast majority of the people, everybody here left, hopefully thinks that's a positive for Alaska and a positive for your community and a positive for our business partners that are here. So I appreciate that we're having the forward-thinking conversations. Craig, I really appreciated your presentation. Kind of just laying it all out there, giving us timelines, letting us know what the costs are. Um, because that's the best way for us to move forward in a, in a proactive way. And again, I have to say, like Lori, Delilah are so great for us to work with, responsive. And I think that our relationship as, as an industry and a community will can just continue to get better. Um, to that end, when you're applying for grants, you know, please know we wrote letters of support for some of the new shore power projects and we've written letters of support for other projects throughout the state as CLIA. And we're always willing to do that as long as it's, you know, as long as it's something that we, you know, we're all on the same page with. But most of the things that we've been sitting here discussing, we would be. So, um, again, thank you. Thank you for your leadership. We're glad to be back here and, um, we look forward to things just getting better.
Thank you. Lula?
Yeah, thank you all for being here. It, it is really nice to have faces to nod to and and, uh, um, I, I just think th- this has been great. I, I love hearing directly from everyone and, um, you folks up there on the, on the board too. Um, but thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember?
Uh, yeah, I'll reiterate, uh, Councilmember Kissler's, um, word of thanks to members of the industry who are here with us today and with us online. Uh, and I would like to speak specifically to, uh, the sense of gratitude that I have for the sincere efforts that seem to be undertaken to reduce the amount of scour uh, under the, the ship berths with respect to azo pods and thrusters and so on. Because knowing the condition of the port and knowing that that's an ongoing need for the ships for departures and arrivals. It's, it's good to know that there is a, a sincere effort underway to reduce that amount of wear on a port that's already, um, in need of some significant work. So thank you for taking on that effort because I know it was an issue we raised in March.
Thank you. Nick?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank, um, all of our friends from the cruise lines for participating. You know, in my, in my past, it's always been better when we talk to each other and we lay out what are, what our needs are and what our solutions are. This is, um, I guess the second meeting, so we're started. We need to move along a little faster, in my opinion. But, uh, anyway, thanks for coming and we'll keep it going.
Thank you. Jay?
Thank you to all the visitors present. Thank you to the visitors online. This is a partnership between the local community and the cruise industry. It doesn't need to be a contention. This community and this port city is very fortunate that Survey Point Holding holds us together as a city meets our needs through communication with CLIA. But now we are starting to communicate directly with the port industry, with the cruise industry. As I said, and I will reiterate, it needs to be a partnership for better quality of life for the local population and a great experience for the visitor in Ketchikan. So I am very excited to see this partnership between the three entities continuing to, for the betterment of the quality of life and the experience of the visitor. So thank you very much for being here.
Judy?
Um, I appreciate all the presentations from the staff and I certainly appreciate the conversation. And thank you to the people in the audience who showed up to hear what we have to say or what they have to say. And really, uh, I guess I just look forward to seeing the agreement. Cause I kind of feel like I would need that to really make any additional comments. So thank you and thank you all for coming.
Is there anybody online that wishes to make a comment?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, everyone there in the audience and around the table. It's great to see you all. Sorry we aren't there in person, um, all of us. But we absolutely appreciate this opportunity and look forward to continuing our work with Lori and Delilah, uh, Lacy as well and, uh, the rest of you. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Hi, and Kirby Day in, in Juneau here with the sun in my eyes, which I don't, um, have any problem with for once. And, um, again, tha- thank you all in Ketchikan there for taking the time and those folks that showed up to listen. And, um, council members and the mayor, thank you again for, uh, spending the time with the industry there. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, thank you, everybody. It's been, uh, very informative. Uh, I think that we're, uh, at the beginning of a great relationship. I think that'll, that'll be a model for other, other ports and, and, uh, businesses in state Alaska. One of the things I would like to do is if you would enjoy, join me in saying happy birthday to Lacy. Um, and so I want to make sure that everybody understands this is a public process. It's going to be open. Uh, we're going to have discussions about it. There are certain things and right, uh, Delia said that we're going to be in negotiations on and we'll have to do those prior to that. But it will be opened up for public comment at some point. We'll work through those things. And this is, this is an agreement that will be, uh, I think, a, a, a fluid agreement to where as they time change, things change, we will be able to change with them, uh, through amending the agreement, uh, or having a mutual agreement about how we do that. Um, but I certainly appreciate the time, uh, of our partners here from the cruise industry, from CLIA for, uh, the information they provide. And I'm looking forward to sitting down and figuring out what our capital projects look like for the 10 years, next 10 years. And how we're going to achieve those and, and what we're going to do to improve, um, the, the quality of life, not only for the community, but for the cruise passenger that enjoys our beautiful community. So thank you. Do we have any other comments? Delilah, would you like to say anything?
No, no, Mayor. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm very much looking forward to us having the data and documentation and, and that math makes me happy.
Thank you. With no further business, I have a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.
Please help yourselves to lunch if you weren't able to grab any or a cookie.